Yep.
We're good. Oh, I didn't have the governor's announcement.
I have it.
Okay, great.
Hang on just for a second. Following the governor's restrictions on public meetings, this meeting of the Shute's Berry Planning Board is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation only. The public may access it following the instructions in this meeting's agenda posted on the town website.
Okay, okay. One, one piece of information is that four preliminary subdivision plans were delivered to Town Hall today for the four solar sites. I took a look at the text of one of them and it appears to be, it appears to be a subdivision for two houses that probably, that almost certainly has nothing to do with their actual intentions.
Deacon, I, I very briefly saw application materials, you know, just application forms, but I wasn't, I didn't see any plans. Do they actually submit plans?
I'm here.
Oh, good.
Good.
It's, that's misleading. It says Penny Jakes, but it's not. My computer, my laptop broke, so I had to use Penny's.
Anyway, Deacon, are there any actual plans that came in?
Well, there's a map of the site. They.
All right.
I don't think there are any real plans here, no.
All right, well, then we'll scrutinize that because there are requirements for preliminary subdivision plans and the map is certainly one of them. So we'll scrutinize that very carefully.
Yeah.
When, when we next meet.
Yeah, and the, the plans are, are going to be on the table in Town Hall, the, you know, where the mailboxes are.
Not that we know it. They didn't submit electronically because.
I think they did that too.
Okay.
Well.
But they're actual hard copies in Town Hall.
Yeah, but nobody can get.
They're supposed, they're supposed to submit electronically during this time and.
Yeah, but I, I think you can, I mean, I think if you want a paper copy, you, you can call Suzie and knock on the door and, and get something brought out to you.
But, but where can we, Linda, where can we find the electronic version?
I see, I don't know, Deacon, did Suzie send it to the planning board email by any chance?
I very briefly saw something from Suzie and then it disappeared. I don't know where it went. Maybe back up into the cloud somewhere.
That must be Jim. That must be Jim. I didn't, I didn't look carefully, but I, I think I saw something too where there wasn't a, there was electronic submission on, on, on my email.
All right, well.
Well, we're not going to deal with it today anyway.
Yeah, we have 45 days to play around with it. Okay, so Deacon, why don't you get us going? Because I know Steve and I have someplace to go.
Better things to do, yeah. Not, not really, but what, what the heck?
So, so you've written a report, Jeff.
Yeah, and I'm going to share it now.
Okay.
All right, so have we called the meeting to order and all that, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so we're on to the report, which is a draft report that I wrote two of the sections and Michael wrote the sign section. And we put this together as not only to fulfill the requirement that we have a report because town meeting can't vote without a planning board report. If there's been less than two weeks between the public hearing and the town meeting, the planning board has to submit a report. And number two, I wrote it to be a crib sheet because we've been urged to be brief. So what I'm thinking, what I'm thinking is that we'd be really brief. When these articles come up, whoever's presenting will simply read. We won't have to ad lib and go on and on and on. We'll just read these bullets and then we'll answer questions. And I've been, I've been told that, that that's going to be perfectly adequate and it's going to make everybody happy if we present them like that. So with that in mind, let me show you the report.
Yep, you're, you're set to do it.
Okay, are you here? There we go. Can you guys see it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna minimize you guys. So here it is. It's two pages, right? And I, I tried to space it and make it as easy on the eye as possible. I had two pages, so I used all of them. So it's a planning board report and it starts out by saying, "All three zoning articles are developed and are sponsored by the planning board. The planning board, after holding a public hearing on June 22nd, 2020, recommends passage of the articles as follows." And then, so here we go. Article 15, the first one we're going to take up, "Proposed amended solar bylaw." And that, in each one of these, there's a little intro. It's only a sentence or two. "With four major ground mounted solar electric installations soon to be proposed in Shute's Berry, the planning board seeks to amend its existing solar bylaw to ensure the town has adequate control through the special permitting process." That's our rationale for doing this. And then here are the 10 things. I don't know if you want me to go through them.
Well, actually, Jeff, I had, I had a couple of little suggestions, little tweaks to some of the things.
Okay.
I mean, you can tell me whether it's important or not, but, and a couple of little word changes. The, the first bullet here, which is good. Can we either add to bring it in line with Shute's Berry's master plan or make it consistent with Shute's Berry's open space plan, whatever the bigger umbrella is? In other words, it's something I've been pushing all along. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah, that's all. Just to, you know, evoke that. I think that's an important connection.
Okay. All right, so for purposes, next one is "Commercial forestry prohibited on the sequestration land, the life of the project." The next one is.
Excuse me, Jeff. Is it, do we, is it enough to say, should, should note be made of, of the exception to that?
No, no, trying to keep it, keep it brief, Deacon.
Okay.
You know, it's just the main point and if, if, if it occurs to the presenter to say something about the exempt, the, the exception, or if somebody gets up and says, "Oh, what about if the trees, what if you have a forest fire or something?", then you could just answer it.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Wildflower meadow currently required in and around the solar panels designed to better, to be better, is to be designed to, to be. Eliminate some words. Designed. To be. Better habitat for pollinators. Bob, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay.
The, just the wildflower meadow currently required in and around solar panels is being redesigned, is it?
Is designed.
Required, now. Required to, putting all my words back, required to be designed.
No, just required to be better habitat for pollinators. I don't think you need designed.
Okay, required to be better, yep, okay.
That's good.
Wait a minute, do. Do you want required in there twice?
Well, good catch.
And just, just replace "designed to be better", just replace the second "required" with "designed".
Designed to be better, yeah. Okay?
Yes.
Okay. "Protection of historic resources and properties is enhanced."
I would suggest improved instead of enhanced. Unless anybody has a problem with that.
No.
This is the one that Michael usually does.
Okay.
I'm going to have to bone up on it though because he doesn't know what, what he's going to be able to do tomorrow.
Does everybody know?
Does everybody know what? Apparently I don't.
That, um, Michael's mother died unexpectedly.
Oh, no, I didn't, no, I did not know that. I'm so sorry.
Hmm.
Oh, man.
Hmm.
Okay. But he's going to be at town meeting, he said.
Wow.
Well, gosh.
Yeah.
But, you know, like what his capabilities will be.
Yeah.
Have to see.
When, when did his mom pass on?
Did he say Thursday, Thursday night?
So just last night?
Last night, yeah.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Okay, here's, here's the one, here's the one where, where, you know, we've had the interesting stuff so far. "Construction access is required to be from, from more suitable paved roads." I, I put that in based on some stuff I heard at the select board meeting the other night.
And I think that's good, Jeff. And, and I'm going to suggest some language for the second part of this regarding the waivers.
Okay.
And then you can respond to it. "Construction access required to be from more suitable paved roads or from dirt roads with planning board approval, with, with planning board waiver approval required." Something like that, so that you get upfront that it could be off of a dirt road, but that would require a planning board waiver. So it doesn't seem like it's exclusive. It's not really exclusive. The, the fact is, it's not exclusive to paved roads. You get my gist? Yeah, there you go. That's the idea.
All right, do we want to say anything about the guidance on, on the waivers? Because unlike the other sections, we actually put guidance in, in here.
You could say.
Guidance to planning board on approval of way, of any waivers.
Yeah, that's fine. I think, I think that's fine.
All right, and then in the.
I suppose you could also say, let me just throw this out, "Or from unpaved roads with planning board approved, with a planning board approved waiver." If you wanted to squeeze it into the first sentence. And then you don't need the, the second one.
Well.
Oh, you, you need the word, you need the word guidance in there?
Right, because the planning board approved waiver goes for everything in the whole bylaw. That's true.
I see. Okay.
But here we have special guidance. It has to go to the select board and highway department and we can only approve it if they concur. So this is a special waiver.
I got you. All right.
All right, so. And the last thing.
What about saying with a, with approved, with, with a planning board approved waiver comma made with guidance, guided by advice from select board and highway department?
Well, that would be good.
Is that a run on sentence, Deacon?
It is, but it'll, it'll work.
What, what, what would the headmaster have said?
I'm just saying, just indicating that the guidance is from highway department and, and select board.
Yeah.
Isn't it, anyone say concurrents?
With.
A concurrent, that's good, yeah.
Oh, oh, you just say.
Concurrent.
Concurrent.
Is a stronger word, isn't it, than guidance?
He doesn't know how to spell that, though.
What?
I told you.
Now, this is where, this is where a spell check comes in handy. Okay.
C, C U R R E.
There you go.
With, with concurrents from. Select board, because it's not really the highway department. The, the select board always trumps the highway department. With the correct from select board on approval of any waivers.
Yeah, I think that's good.
All right, so.
Well, what about leaving out on approval of any waivers?
Okay, we can shorten.
Yeah, that's like, that's good, Deacon. I think it's implied because we've already said it.
Okay. We're, we're going to apply an approval waiver. With concurrents from select board. Okay, we're, we're doing good. So, so the last thing I say is, is that we're, we're going to substitute in the other language.
Right.
Right, and we'll have that.
Okay.
I, do I need to show that again, or does anybody want to see it?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, all right. Lots for solar installations, let's meet town road fund requirements. This is just a reminder because they already do have to. So this, this is a reminder to developers. "A maximum of nine major ground mounted solar installations is set townwide with a map showing where."
You, are, we're, so we're still including that zone six even though that's DCR?
Yep. I, I got a question about that and it, it just doesn't matter. We can modify the map down the road.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
You know.
That's fine.
Maybe DCR sells to land to a solar developer and they could put one in there.
Okay.
Who knows? Added special permit criteria to include minimization of incompatible appearance from the roadway.
I'm not sure what that means. I mean, it, there's a, like, for some reason, my mind's doing flips.
Well.
What's a straightforward way of saying that?
Well, this is in sort of a section that sort of said general criteria and, and there's, there's a number of things. It says minimization of, and, and it's like a lot of other things. So now we're including minimization of incompatible appearance from the roadway.
Okay, I, I see. You got to know something about the zoning bylaw to understand that, but okay.
Yeah.
All right, I don't know, a simple, I don't know a simple fix, so let's, let's keep going.
All right, if anybody cogitates on that and has a better thing, we can, we can get to it. "To determine location of wetland resources on the site, applicants are required to file an ANRAD."
Yeah, the only thought here I would suggest is to determine location, to deter, to delineate wetland resources. It, so it's, it's the preferred state way of delineating wetlands. It's, or, and I think it, it should be, so it doesn't seem, it's not arbitrary, like, we're not saying we should do this. The state is, it's the state's preferred way. So. I'll let you take a stab at it first.
DEP.
Yes, there you go. Thank you, Linda. DEP. You, you could say to use a DE preferred method of wetland delineation and then just say abbreviated notice of resource. That would be a simple, simple thing to do.
I don't, I don't think you have to say that.
Which, which, Linda?
The DEP preferred, or you could just say DEP or Wetland Protection Act. Abbreviated notice of resource deline, area delineation. Right?
Well, it's not a requirement, right? To, using ANRAD is not absolutely a requirement.
It's going to be in this bylaw.
But you're requiring it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're saying that it's, it's an established standard that the state is, that's what I'm trying to.
Oh, I see, okay.
You see, I'm saying it's not just arbitrary for Shute's Berry to use this. It's actually the way the state's going. That's what I was trying to indicate to people who don't know anything about this.
Well, and applicants are going that way as well, just.
Right, but this is really for the general public.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, I know. You're right.
Would it be helpful to use the word shall use?
How's that?
Yeah, just strike out the V in front of DEP.
Okay. DEP standard method abbreviated, yeah, ANRAD. Linda, how's that sound?
Sounds fine, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If Linda likes it, she's done the CONCON, so. All right, here's another, here's another CONCON you want. "Ground alterations, strange facilities and solar panels must be located over 100 feet from wetlands or hydrologic features." What it says is, is anything of the jurisdiction of the Shute's Berry Conservation Commission. So we're just saving them the trouble of pushing them out of the buffer. We're, we're, we're doing it. We're doing it with zoning. But I didn't want to put anything under the jurisdiction of the CONCON because then it looks like we're kind of stepping in, in, in their turf with zoning.
Right.
So, we won't say anything about that. Okay, are, are we good for the solar?
Yes.
There, there's 10 things here and I'm just going to read these. I or Michael, maybe we'll, we'll see what we want to do. We're just going to read them.
Okay.
If, usually. Usually we say, we try to say a lot more, but we're not going to do it tomorrow. We're just going to read them and then, if there's any questions, and we've already had a hearing, we already went before the select board, so. Okay, "Proposed amended sign bylaw." Michael submitted this to me and then I've been playing with it a little bit. And here's what we've got. "Given that the signed bylaw has not been substantively updated in approximately 25 years." "A planning board review uncovered opportunities to amend the existing bylaw to bring it into legal compliance. Create more flexibility for signs on private property and establish regulation." Regulations for signs on public property.
The first sentence, you need to change the B to Ben. Given that the signed bylaw has not been.
Oh, thank you. Ben, yep. Ben, yep.
In the second line, bring it into legal compliance, should that be bring existing signs into legal compliance? I mean, I'm not sure what it means.
To amend the existing sign bylaw. This is all about the sign bylaw.
Yeah. But the sign bylaw doesn't need to be brought into legal compliance. It's the signs themselves, right?
No, there was a case, Reed versus Town Gilbert Supreme Court. Case that we had to make some adjustments for.
Okay, I'm good with that. Good.
To bring in, okay, we're all right with this? Uh-oh.
That's.
Uh-oh, it's the election commission. We'll take that. Okay. Here are the bullets. Allows commercial signs by right, currently limited to agricultural and horticultural. So, commercial signs required a special permit before. Now they're allowed by right with standards. Allow signs off premises with approval of the other landowner, currently not allowed. Eliminates temporary sign categories to comply with the 2015 Supreme Court ruling in Reed v. Town of Gilbert. Expands other categorical uses of signs. Expands allowed sign size for retail, consumer, commercial, and accessory signs. I think it goes from 20 to 24 square feet on this one. Establishes distance regulations that will allow signs to be five feet from a road's traveled lane, even in town-owned right-of-way.
Do you want to?
I still have, I still have Donna McNichols saying 99% of all the roads in Chutesbury are easements. And I've got Merrill Mandell, who I just talked to today about this stuff, saying that they're not. They're fee ownerships. A lot of these roads are fee. So you only, you know, the town owns 30 or 40 or 50 feet outright. And your property doesn't really start until you get to the outer limit of that. That's what Merrill believes. And then Donna believes something else, so. And this bylaw works differently depending on which case you're talking about. So. Anyway, I hope I never have to get into that tomorrow. Creates regulations regarding signs on town property. That was one of the goals. Establishes safety considerations as a factor for sign location. Establishes 8:00 PM and 8:00 PM limit for illuminated signs. How are we on this?
Fine.
Okay. All right, last one, Article 30 proposed, and it's all on the backside of this thing. Based on the planning board's experience with this bylaw since 2008, and statewide improvements in this class of bylaws, planning board seeks to amend the existing bylaw to bring it into sync with current best practices. Purposes section better emphasizes ecologic benefits of protected open space. Kind of puts that up front over commercial forestry. For an improved review process, require a special permit instead of site plan review for proposed developments that are not subdivisions. That's, that, you know, I'm just going to read that, and nobody's going to know what the hell I'm talking about, but that's the way it goes.
Jeff, excuse me, change van to that.
Oh, thank you. Better not subdivisions. For these non-subdivision developments, allow planning board to assess the conservation benefits versus detriments of permitting a greater number of dwelling units than would otherwise be possible. This is like this case that came into us recently, where it went from two to like four or five. So we get to we get to do a little bit of value judgment there. That's why we have to have it in the special permit, because you can't do that in site plan review. More consistent with accepted zoning practice, round fractional units down instead of up. I could say two. To be more consistent with accepted zoning practice, round fractional units down instead of up. Sound okay? Clarify that proposed percentage increases in open space are based on whole parcel area.
Hey, Jeff?
Yeah.
I just realized. What if he just put to make more consistent instead of being? Sounds like we're, to make more consistent.
Sure. That's. Still on one page. Good. Clarify that proposed percentage increase in open space are based on whole parcel area. That's an esoteric thing, too. Clarifies that total combined density bonuses and density transfers cannot exceed 25% in excess of dwelling units otherwise possible. Another thing that only us from dealing with it will know about. That was just actually a typo in the original one.
Is it worth even? Is it worth even mentioning?
Huh?
Is it worth even mentioning? It's just going to confuse people.
You know, maybe not. I mean, the first one said the first one said maximum density transfers cannot increase the units more than 50%. And then it said the total of density bonuses and density transfers cannot exceed 25%.
Yeah.
It was an inconsistency.
I think it's going to cause more questions than it's really just a technicality.
Bye.
Okay.
Stipulates that open space must be configured as separate parcels from the building lots. This is easy to explain if anybody asks. In, in the event a conservation restriction is proven not feasible, provide other acceptable alternative forms of open space preservation.
I would just, I think that's fine. I would just flip the clauses. Provide acceptable alternative forms of open space preservation in the event a conservation restriction is not feasible.
To provide.
To provide. And I don't think you need alternative to provide other acceptable forms. It's almost a redundant.
Other.
Acceptable, I think, to provide other acceptable forms of open space preservation in the event a conservation restriction is not feasible. I don't think you need proven. Is not, is, I don't think you need his, yeah, you got it.
Well, I in reality, the applicant's going to have to prove it, because otherwise we want a conservation restriction, right? But.
Yes, but we're not getting that technical right now.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I don't think there's a need to.
Get my spacing here. Good. Good, good.
I think there's an extra, in the very last bullet, I think there's an extra space between the two.
At the, yeah, at the beginning of the bullet.
The last?
No, the two, at the very first words, Linda's pointing. No, no, keep, right where you were. It says to provide in front of the two, in front of the word two.
Okay.
Take this, yeah, there you go.
You're right. All right. You guys are sharp out there. We got, we got different size.
Yeah, what size is your font?
Michael's, the difference, the sign is, you get different fonts there.
He is a different font.
Just do select all and then pick up font size.
For?
For the whole document.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is also, this is also supposed to be 12. So like so?
Yeah, and then put 12, and that should take, I didn't take care, it didn't.
Didn't work.
It didn't work, huh?
Michael had it on like automatic.
Yeah, and you can't override it. Oh, what a pain in the ass.
Now, oh, I've gone on to another page.
Just, just, just undo a couple of times.
Bye-bye. Okay.
To get back to where you were.
All right, anybody got, anybody got any idea how I'm going to do that?
No, that should have worked. What I suggested should have worked. There's something else going on in the document.
I could have figured that. I could, what's that? That, but that's a 12. Why can't I? Now.
You guys could have different versions of Microsoft, who knows?
Yeah.
He just, he, right, he formatted it differently.
Yeah.
Yeah, Michael did, yeah.
Well, I think we are going to hand this out, right, Linda?
I don't know about plans regarding paper. I don't. You have to check with Becky about that.
How many pages is this, Jeff?
It's one, double-sided.
One, okay. And do you have any on the second page? Are you right down at the bottom?
Yeah, a little space right there.
Go back up then. Let me make one other suggestion then, and that is to see if Article 29, if you bumped that, if you do a page break there so that Article 29 is at the top of the page, it might, I don't know if it'll fit. You know, onto the, you don't want to spill onto a third page. And then take that.
On my, on my copy, it looks like that does work, Steve.
It does, it did work.
It doesn't work on mine.
No, it's still two pages. You got a blank third page.
But it didn't accomplish the change in the doc, sorry.
No, no, that wasn't designed to.
So why did we just do that?
Just because the second page then starts with Article 29. It's cleaner.
Oh.
That's all. That's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have all this blank stuff on the first page. Okay, then we go to this, and we go to this.
And then just the third page.
Just backs, yeah, there you go. You got it. Hit save.
Hey, I'm slicker than you think, Steve. I'm telling you. I'm proving it to you right in front of your face here. Look at this.
Like, your techno savvy just like astounds me.
I might as well. Now I can give myself a little more space up here. Okay, all right, so you know, so Linda, I don't know what to do with this.
You know, I'm not, Jeff, I'm not involved in any of the direct plans for tomorrow. So you could either, you're going to have to check with I don't know how to advise you, either Paul or Becky. Because I know Becky was handling any kinds of handout things.
Okay.
You know, because I'm not, I've been working from home, so I've not been in town hall.
Okay, so people are asked to print out their own stuff. Based on what they get off the town website.
Yep.
So if I come with a handful of these that I printed here, it's not cool, because I've touched them and stuff, right?
Yeah, I don't, see, that's why I want you to, you'll need to talk to email Paul and Becky and Catherine. I, you know, I think they're the people that are, you know, overseeing all the details.
Deacon, can you do that? And I'll just, after we approve this thing, I'll just keep it here, and if I see an email from you later to forward it, do something with it, I will.
Okay.
Jeff, will you, will you forward that, will you send the document to me so I have it for the record, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So. So if I, if I were to do this, this is going to be hard for me, Jeff. I ordered a new computer today.
Just call him on the phone. They're probably there.
Call Paul. Because I thought I saw.
Yeah, hey, Deacon? Paul's number is 259-1556. My neighbor for 20 years, so I remember it.
Okay, I will call him and.
Yeah, 1556.
Okay. And just, and just find out what the protocol is for handouts?
Yep, and you know, one option is for us to just have it ourselves printed out and give the report orally. I think, maybe. I mean, Linda will have it for the record.
Okay, I'll call.
I mean, we could walk, you know. I can send it to Paul, so he as moderator has it, has a copy of it, and then we can deliver it orally.
Okay, I'll converse with him.
Okay. All right, well, Steve and I are going out for a little while, and then and then I'll be back and I'll follow instructions. But I think we're going to need a, I think we're going to need a motion in a second to approve this thing. I'll move to approve the content of this report to annual town meeting on the three zoning articles.
Second. A second?
Robert, second.
Robert.
Okay, any discussion? I'll call the role. Robert?
Robert, yes.
Linda?
I.
Steve?
Yes.
Jeff?
I.
And I'm an I. It's unanimous.
Okay.
Can I make a motion, can I make a motion, we conclude this meeting?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So I, I will, just to be clear.
Woo-hoo.
Okay, yes, I'm about to do that.
Okay, just in the discussion part, just to be clear, I will do with this report what I, what instructions I later get this evening. Okay?
Okay, probably by phone, Jeff, because.
Yeah. That's fine.
Yeah. Okay, Robert?
Yes.
Linda?
I.
Steve?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I'm an I. I think we've done it.
Okay.
All right, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
We'll see you all tomorrow.
Bye.
Thanks, Linda.
Bye, bye, everybody. Okay, I'm going to end it all. Okay, bye, bye, Linda, bye, Deacon.
Bye.